All right, good morning. It's Thursday, September 25th. Batty County Commissioners are in session and we do have an amendment to the agenda, so I would entertain a motion on that.
Make motion that we accept the amended agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Tori. You are up first. Tori and friends. Have you introduce yourself as well. Tori Danner, Batty County Coroner.
Denise of HDA HR and Chief Specialist with Seacog.
Okay, so this morning, we're here to ask to apply for a grant. It is the Colberdale Grant. For, what it is, is this is a grant that specifically will help build like the forensic capability and put us in position to be accredited for a coroner and ME system. So this is a specific grant that's catered to us and so we are looking to get, I believe it's approximately $100,000 for equipment. This equipment that we're looking to purchase would then take away from the equipment that we would buy as we're building. If that makes sense. So, that's ultimately what we're looking to do. It is a short timeline, so that's why we wanted to get on here. It's already been through the grants team, the grants teams reviewed it. We have Seacog just going to help us write it so that we can get this done and put through. Just trying to check our boxes as much as possible.
Okay, questions?
Yeah.
Go for it.
I'm just wondering if we're premature because reading through this and stuff, you say it's for the stuff for the new facility.
Correct.
And after dealing with the forensic and we had to send stuff, well, to Ada County and stuff like that, that we didn't end up using. And, and so, how is this? We haven't even started building yet, but we're trying to house it.
Sure.
Put the stuff in it. And so I'm just a little cautious.
Sure.
Just because of the way the things happened, because we tried that system once and it didn't work very well.
Sure. And I understand that. I mean, ultimately what we're looking to purchase is a cooler. So we're going to need a cooler unit in the new place. And then a table, it's a table sink setup and a, it's like a toxicology machine so we can do in-house toxicology. So all three of those pieces. The two equipment pieces that we speak of, that's, we're going, that's a day-to-day thing. We need those two cool bodies and we need to be able to use the table to do our inspections on. So it's just a matter of, yes, we'll get it and we'll house it until we're ready to, but at the end of the day, it's going to be purchased regardless. It just saves us the money by getting it in a grant versus paying for it out of pocket.
Yeah. But like I said, we tried it once and it didn't work out very well for us.
I don't know how to answer that.
Well, there is one answer because that's a fact.
Sure. I mean, the only reason that that wouldn't go through is if you guys decide not to build. So, and that's, I don't control that decision, so I don't know how to help you there.
I got a, you're supposed to be at a meeting on Monday with me.
Yeah.
About that.
What's the grant application date, 10-6?
Yes.
Got a couple of days on that. Any other strings attached?
Not that I can see. Grant teams reviewed it.
I mean, no other...
It is a no-match.
Or performances, or some dates or performance? Yeah, what are the... Markers or whatever it is? That's, I'm just...
Guarantees that we have to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, absolutely, no, none that we see.
Okay. So, is that a walk-in type of a cooler?
Yes.
How big of a capacity, how, what?
Ultimately...
10 by 10, 10 by 20? How many bodies?
Ultimately, we would be set up to do about 24, based on the rack system and the square footage.
Double stack?
Huh?
Double stack on the rack or...
The racks are four-high.
Four-high?
Mm-hmm.
So about a 10 by 10?
It's, it's the same exact system as what we have in our trailer. We would just be doing the same concept in a walk-in facility.
So when do we expect delivery of this stuff?
Well, we've got to win the grant and then purchase it.
But I mean, if, assuming everything aren't right, where are we going to put this thing, this...
Oh, it's, since here you've got till 10-1 of 28.
Right.
To actually receive it?
So you don't have to buy anything until...
Yeah, I think we would just get the grant and then at that time we would purchase it.
Because there's no sense having that sitting here.
Yeah, no, I...
So, okay. That's all the questions I had.
This is a grant through Seacog, so Tori will have to pay the fee to Seacog.
Correct. So how much is that going to be? What's our fee for...
Approximately $5,000. $5,000.
Five, is that a, is that the tiered for the $100,000 or whatever? Okay, any further discussion?
And I don't mind applying for the grant, but I don't want to be spending money until we have a place and what's going on.
Fair enough.
So, we will be paying $5,000 to Seacog upon receiving the grant?
No, upon writing the grant.
Upon writing the grant.
And submission.
Okay, so that is going to be a cost upfront?
We could just do it.
Okay.
Nancy could write it.
I won't.
You won't have time.
We need to follow the process though. When a department finds a grant, they first go to Nancy, determine if Nancy can do it. If Nancy can't do it, Seacog should be a second. Where we have an in-house individual that is...
I just want to follow that, $5,000 on timing and everything else.
Yeah.
Because if we have to pay that, we will be paying that out of a fund somewhere.
Correct. And what we were looking to do is where this would replace potential equipment we'd be purchasing, we would pull from that same fund.
Okay.
And because, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Because of the short timeframe, if approved, charity now already set time aside to devote strictly to the, to the grant so we can get it out as quickly as possible.
Okay. Okay, any other thoughts, discussion? I don't, with that, I, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and move forward and try to apply for this grant.
And I do have, I know within you guys' process, we look at applying for it and then sending it off. Due to the timeline, we would ask with working with the grants team that we can just go ahead and send it once we get to that point as well.
Is this an electronic signature for submission or is it a...
It's on the federal grant website, so I will have to initiate it and I will add them as users. When they're ready to submit, it will still have to come through us and probably, or maybe it's still the authorized individual from you, so it would still come there. But in the interest of time, I would recommend the same if you're going to apply, that you give permission so that when they're ready, they notify and we make sure that it goes through.
Okay. So add that to the motion. Okay. If we're all clear on that.
Yeah, that'll also give a chance for everybody to review when they're done writing it. We can all review what's there before hitting submit.
Okay, all right. The motion, is there any further discussion?
Unless it's to apply for the grant, not to spend any money.
Correct. Yeah, we would, we would still get, once we apply for it, if we should be selected, they'll notify us that we've been selected and at that point in time, we'll discuss it further.
Okay. But we would be paying money?
Correct. Yeah, we will still spend $5,000.
Upfront for the application fee.
Correct.
So we're clear on that? Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Shanda.
Good morning. Shanda Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer. I have two items before the board today. The first one is I am asking for a review and a potential signature on a change order with Headwaters Construction. As we demoed that building and did the site work on the ground underneath, it was found that there was an old fuel tank underneath Simplot, which we, other projects that we have had. So that has been removed. The soil's been tested, it's good confection, and so we're going to move forward with the parking lot there. But the change order in front of you is for the removal of that old tank as well as capping an existing water line that was running underneath there. And it is for a total of $2,193.99. There is capacity in the contingency fund for this year, so we would, I would recommend that that, excuse me, that the board sign the change order with Headwaters, change order number 11.
I'm curious on the water line. So is that water line still active or are we, I mean, what's the future of this water line?
Dan could speak way better to this. My limited understanding is that we have capped it from running underneath the parking lot, so it doesn't cause additional problems, but that it is still active. We will use it to tap into, to get to, to water YDC and like sprinklers and stuff like that, that we'll still use it. But we've just capped it from running underneath the parking lot.
So I assume we'll have a access point somewhere?
Yes, yes.
Some sort of a valve or box or something that...
Yes.
So how big is the line?
That I don't know.
I mean, we're talking 2-inch, 1-inch, 18-inch? I mean, I...
Sure, no, I apologize. I don't have to...
I'm just curious, because boy, that, that makes a difference how, when you're capping that line.
It was the one that ran into the original house, if that gives any indication of size.
So if there's a shut-off somewhere, where's the...
Yes, yes, yep.
Pretty quiet back there, Dan.
Oh, I didn't, please, please, I did not realize. I'm so sorry.
He's just letting you take all the answers this morning. He wants no part of this discussion.
I'm cool. Come to the table, please. So I'm sorry.
Well, my reason to the question is if that's still a viable line, what future use would we have of that? And let's do it right, rather than just quote "cap it" and then maybe have to dig it back up. I mean, if we put a valve there or what other future purpose could we have of that water line? If any?
It's, it's a mess up there. They don't have shut-off valves throughout that place to shut off the water. You have to go clear up to Olympus to shut the water off, so you shut it off to ag, all the restrooms, the armory. That's the only valve on that whole entire side of the event center. So they had turned it on and off so many times that they, a couple of years ago, had to replace it because they've been using that so much. But the, the one they capped is the one that went through the basement wall of the old house and it is just capped. It is not...
So where's it capped?
We just got it outside of the building site, like along the road.
But I mean, my question is why is there going to be a line under a parking lot that could end up having a problem and we have to dig a parking lot back up in case it leaks?
It's not under the parking lot, it's just along the road, right away.
Okay, that was my question of it is, is, and is there, do we need to put a valve in along there?
We should, we should somewhere, actually several locations, put some valves in there. That plumbing up there is a mess. And every time they go to dig something, no matter what the project, they hit something. No one knows where all that stuff runs to. It's just a, it's a tough thing to deal with up there.
No wonder you were sitting in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was hoping.
Kept your hand down, didn't he?
She's doing great.
I just think that we need to do due diligence and make sure that somewhere down the road, we don't get hit by something that we could have prevented right now, either by putting in a valve or, when you say you stub them off, that's a potential problem with the water line.
Yep.
Eventually they'll eat themselves up, they fill up with sediment unless that line gets open to where once while you can run that through that. Yeah, so I guess that's my only question.
Yeah, it's a great question. I think that we should have a valve at every location. There should be one at Ag, there should be one at the new building, there should be one, there is one now for the shop. We had to, that's one of the ones that we hit. We had to run a new line to the shop because no one knew where that, no one knew where that was at, no one knew where the septic tanks were at. We actually had to go looking and find it because it's so old that even the health department didn't have records of where it was and it'd never been cleaned out because no one knew where it was at. So everything that we've done up there with water and sewer has been just a nightmare.
History kind.
And we hit some that I have no idea where, why they were there, where they were going. It's just, it goes all over the place and it's just been a rough go. But I agree, we should put valves in all over, but I'm, you're looking at probably a, you know, $100,000 project to go down through that thing and just put in four or five valves and make it right, but...
But right now, the tank's been removed already.
Yep.
And this has been capped already.
Yeah. And then we hit another tank under the garage.
Another water tank.
But I think it was just like a, maybe like a catch thing in the garage under a floor because it didn't have any fuel in it, it was just full of water. And they started digging and they hit it and the water started, like popped the tank, the water was spewing out. They thought they hit another water line and it turned out they didn't, so they took that one out too, so it's been fun.
That's just my question, to do what we can to mitigate future issues, whatever that is.
Yeah.
And I get that we don't have the resources right now, but where are we capping that? Not under a parking lot somewhere that we would have to dig back up?
No, not, not under a parking lot and there definitely needs to be a lot of maintenance done up there to the water lines and the sewer lines and it's just been ignored for a long time.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I had, but didn't mean to go down that rabbit hole that far, but...
Sorry. I tried to stay in the back.
So it's all your fault.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the change order number 11.
Okay, we have a motion. All in, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other item I have is a procurement update for the board. We'll go ahead and start with the YDC because we just talked about that change order. We are looking at getting the last fiscal year invoice for that. I've been in contact with Kristy. That should be in my inbox as we speak. And so then we anticipate, she's been kind enough to allow us to get it signed before the board next week and then be able to get, make that deadline for. So I do appreciate her work in with us as we move forward to get what we can in fiscal year '25. This change order will be one of them that's included in that. And then as we start fiscal year '26 in that project, we should be in good, good space. If you go to your dashboard, starting at the top there for the Event Center Master Planning Services, that has been drafted and I do have comments in my inbox as well. So that scope of work is being refined as we talk to the board about, right, being very specific about deliverables and what we were anticipating, what we were seeking for. And so that project is moving right along. In regards to planning and development, I mentioned that we're going back out for surveyor plat review services. Nowhere near any of our thresholds, but we did really like the process of how it works. So we'll follow that same process to allow any surveyors that are in the region that are interested in that work. We do anticipate that one going live early next week. If we drop down to Roden Bridge Roof Replacement, that bid opening is today, so I'm excited to get that project moving forward. And then my last update is for the landfill, the Scalehouse Construction Entrance Project that we have going on. We have received a protest on that, so all procurement has been stopped for the moment. We're working with legal and we are hoping to bring that item back to the board next week, hopefully, forward to one consideration. And that is all that I have for the board today.
Okay.
Monday, a meeting with Shanda and Dan and Hal and Tori and Kyle, and we're going to go out and look around. Dan really hasn't been involved in any of that project out there, and so I'm going to get his input in where, what, and how, and when we start and what we do out there, so...
Okay, sounds good.
We are really hoping to, not hoping, we are using lessons that we have learned in these past ARPA projects, larger construction, to set us on a good path for this one. And we are looking at 10, 20 years down the line, what they need for utilities, right, what they have, sewer, water, things that we have run into as far as, I'm going to, who's up at the YDC? I missed the word. When they cut across our property, when they have easements, there we go. Right, we're already looking into easements and things like that. So all of us are way better versed at things to question and wanting to get the right people involved as part of that to really make it be a great project going forward. It's supposed to be great stuff.
Cool, thank you.
So how many water lines are we going to discover out there at the Roden Bridge?
Four tanks.
Four tanks?
Yeah, that seems to be their goal.
That one scares me.
Let's not ask those questions.
Right, we're doing our best to identify what we can and then we move forward.
I mean, that I think was Dale's Auto Salvage Yard.
Before us.
Before the county got it.
Oh, man.
They had that, you know, both sides, but that above there was Salvage Yard.
Could be some interesting things in there.
Could be. Good luck with that. All right, thank you. Matthew.
Matthew Phillips, Human Resources Director. First item I have for you is an update on the Percy Choice 401K Plan. Back in December 23rd of 2022, this Cure Act was passed by Congress, which made a lot of updates to retirement-type plans. And I'd just like to be clear, this does not affect the Percy Pension Plan. However, Percy Choice 401K is partnered with them as an additional contribution if employees want to contribute towards it. It's currently, the current record keeper for that plan is Empower. We recently attended a webinar that Empower presented and talked about some of the changes we will have to make to the 401K Plan. Before the first of the year, there was requirements in that law that don't affect us as much per se or may affect people in retirement. They, they increase the required minimum age that you have to start pulling out to 73. Eventually it'll increase to 75. And some other changes that we've made, already made on how we transmit payroll to Percy 401K. But there's three changes in the packet today that I just wanted to go over to make you aware of and one action item. So first of all, the Percy Choice 401K has only been offered on a pre-tax basis. Moving forward by January, we need to also author it as a Roth or a post-tax option to employees. We think this will be a good thing because it will just give employees more options. And so that's just one change that we're making you aware of, that we have to make. So it's not necessarily an action item, but something I think you need to be aware of. Second item, which I think is a bigger deal and will require more changes by us in the future, is we have to allow part-time eligibility moving forward for any longstanding part-time employee with W-2 wages. So we will have to bring before you, within the next couple of months, changes to our status policy and kind of retool how we do that. Because before, it's been very simple that we've only allowed benefits to full-time employees. So we're going to have to kind of reimagine how we, how we offer that and how we communicate it to employees. So I don't have anything for you today because there's a couple other vendors I'm checking with, specifically our 457 Plan, which is also similar to this as to whether they allow part-time eligibility. But we will be bringing policy changes for that in the future. I don't know if you have any questions on that point because that is kind of a different approach than what we've done in the past, but it's, it's something that we kind of have to do under the law.
And basically Percy said if they get a W-2, it could be our season loss. If they get a W-2, they're eligible for this, so...
Doesn't mean they have to, because the 401K, from my understanding, for existing plans, we don't necessarily have to enroll people in automatic, automatically enroll people like some of the new 401K plans will move forward, but it's something we do have to offer. So just to make you aware of that, I don't know if you have any questions or should we keep? Okay. That, the other option that we do need to discuss is, most of these retirements allow, plans allow what are called catch-up contributions. So if you're, there's a certain limit right now for 2025, people can contribute up to $23,500. If you're over 50 and you want to contribute more, you can do what are called catch-up contributions up to a limit of $31,000. And this new bill allows what are called super catch-up contributions up to $34,500 if you're between the ages of 60 and 63. However, between 64 and 65, we have to drop you back down to a regular catch-up contribution. The way this was explained to us by Empower is that this is an optional provision that we don't necessarily have to implement. After talking with Kristy, we both felt that was pretty convoluted. We don't have anyone currently hitting the regular catch-up contribution amount. I, me personally, I also think it was really confusing to only make it available between ages 60 and 63 and then bump people back down to regular contribution from 64 to 65. I think that'll be really confusing for employees. So the action item that we do want you to consider is not offering this super catch-up as part of, as our plan to, to our employees and allowing us to communicate that to Empower. And just offer the typical super catch-up limit where no one yet has hit that and it's much simpler to understand. But any questions on that one or...
I actually did that catch-up before and that actually pays dividends.
It does.
If you really calculate that. So anyway, it was interesting. I have, I had no idea what that, what that even meant, but it did make a significant thing. I'm not sure about the super deal, whether we need to do that.
Yeah, and we're, we're recommending that we don't currently. I think we could, if we ever got someone close to that amount, we could look at it in the future, but I think we'll, it's hard enough to explain the catch-up to employees. I don't think we have enough high wage earners to, or enough people participating. We do have a few doing catch-up contributions, but none of them to this point have, that we're aware of, come close to the limit of the regular catch-up. So what we're asking or recommending to the board is that we work towards implementing these changes. We're looking at maybe having some educational sessions early December and if any employees want to make changes with their, with Roth contributions, they can, but trying to get the rest of it implemented by the first, except for not implementing the super catch-up at least this plan year.
You just went through enrollment, you didn't have anybody even in this group, right?
Yeah, unfortunately, I was pushing Percy 401K Choice to try to get this information sooner because what, you know, we could have done it during open enrollment, but they, they haven't even made the form available to us till, until the 20th. They just barely made it available to us. So, but this is one of those plans that it can really be done on a mid-year. It's not bound by the annual enrollment type of thing, so I think we could revisit with employees in December if they want to make any changes, which we, which we will. And we'll also have to, at that point, make it available to part-timers and meet with them if they want to. I don't know if they will, but what we're asking to...
Parts that we're required, I mean, we're going to do.
Yeah.
The super catch-up, I don't see that we need to put any extra burden on you or payroll at this time.
I agree with that.
Yeah. So you're not looking for any action item?
On the super catch-up, where it's optional, I think it'd be good if the Commissioners did say that for this year at least, we're not going to participate in the super catch-up for the plan.
I doubt it would affect hardly anybody.
Yeah.
So did you hear that? We do have a motion.
I heard.
Okay, okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. And like I say, we will be bringing policy changes for you in the future.
While you're there, can people still do voluntary contributions? The reason I bring that up is after meeting with United Way, we saw that checkout at Simplot, the number of employees that give to United Way. I think she was kind of, I know they used to do that, but we don't, we don't have any voluntary contributions to United...
We still have a couple of people doing that.
So you still have a couple...
And I think we do make the form available to orientation. We don't, just don't have a lot of people who participate in it.
We used to have a lot of participation with United Way and then it just trickled out.
Yeah.
And we didn't anymore. And to start a new deduction, we require 25% participation or it doesn't happen.
Okay. Okay. I told her I would be glad to bring that up just for my own benefit of seeing where we're at on that. So, okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. The next thing I have before you is just something to consider. No action item today, but just wanted to, um, discuss maybe some potential additions in the future. I, I also want to start by saying I want to thank the commission and the clerk's office for all they do to keep our benefits, uh, or they've done this past year to keep our benefits competitive for employees. Um, so by bringing this option, it's not to say that we don't have a great benefits plan. We do. Um, even when I'm in excellent interviews with employees, sometimes, a lot of times they say that's one reason they considered not leaving is because of the benefits. Um, however, that being said, uh, just because we have good benefits, I don't think we need to rest on our laurels. Um, and we need to look at other ways that we can be competitive in recruitment and retention. Um, so one area that we don't do a lot in, in our benefits offering currently is educational assistance. We do, um, do employment verifications for those who are trying to get public service loan forgiveness, but that's more of a federal program. Um, and then there's a lot of private companies that they'll offer tuition reimbursement programs, a lot of times because it's a tax write-off for them. Um, however, where we're taxed exempt, that doesn't really make sense for us or other public agencies. Um, and so I've, I've kind of crossed paths with Nick Theris. So if you want to come up, um, he's with the State of Idaho 529 Education Plan. Um, now I have a lot of, you know, brokers and agents and salespeople that come across, you know, that I interact with every day. And a lot of times I don't bring them before the commission because there's nothing new there to really off or discuss. However, I did just want to give Nick, um, five minutes to kind of give an overview of what this could look like. I think it could be a, a potential, um, good thing for employees who are trying to save for their education or for their kids' education. Um, and it can basically, uh, be a, a simple way for them to, um, um, set money aside for that. I know we set aside a lot of money for retirement. That's important. But there's a lot of us who are also, you know, trying to figure out how we're going to pay for kids' school or our own schooling. Um, and I think this is an option. This is currently offered by ISU City Pocatello, um, city or county of Twin Falls. I inadvertently put, uh, county of Bonneville. I meant to put Idaho Falls City, so on the agenda request. But I thought we could give Nick five minutes here to just give an overview of this. We're not asking for an action item and then answer questions for maybe five minutes. And, um, and in all of this, the 401K stuff has got to be more important and at the forefront, but this is just maybe looking at potential things that we could look at in the future after that's implemented. So.
Yep. So Nick Theris, Ideal 529 College Savings Program. Uh, good morning. Um, excited to be here today. Uh, so my role with the company with the 529 plan is actually assisting employers on the public side and the private side, um, on how they can offer the state 529 plan as a voluntary benefit, um, for employees. So, uh, Matthew and I had a conversation about a month ago, right, about the plan. And he wanted me to come speak to you all today about who we are as the 529 plan and how, how you may be able to offer the plan as a benefit, uh, for county boys. Um, so we thought it would be a good idea just for me to do is to quick overview of who we are, right, as the 529. Then I'll talk about the benefit side of it real quick and kind of how easy it is and, um, from, from that, from that perspective. So we are the State of Idaho's 529 College Savings Program. We're a state-sponsored program. Uh, six of the constitutional officers of the State of Idaho sit on our board, right, and help us run the program. Um, and our mission, our purpose is to help Idaho families save for education in a taxed advantaged way. So really the whole point of using the 529 plan is for the tax benefits, right? So I'm just going to go over those really quickly, highlight those. Um, so the number one, probably the biggest benefit we have, right, the most Idaho taxpayers use the plan is we have a state tax deduction for contributions that go into our program, right? So if you're an Idaho taxpayer and you put money into your 529 plan, you can deduct those contributions annually, up to $12,000 a year if you're married filing joint, up to $6,000 a year if you're a single filer. Right? So I have a thousand dollars I put in my son's 529. I can then take that thousand dollars and deduct it directly off of my Idaho state taxes. Um, second tax benefit is our tax deferred growth, right? So obviously that just means while our money's growing in our accounts, we're not paying tax on it. Um, 529s are post-tax vehicles, right? So more like a Roth than like a traditional, so post-tax. That makes a big difference when we start talking about the benefit side and the payroll side and, and all that kind of stuff. Uh, we'll get to that here in just a moment, but these are post-tax, post-tax options. So then let's talk about now where and what we can use it on, right? So our third benefit is qualified expenses. So when we pull our money out worth a qualified expense, then our growth is going to come out federal and state tax-free. Never have to pay federal or state tax on any of our growth. Um, so where we can use it? Um, anywhere in the country. By far the biggest myth of the program, I've been with the program for 10 years now, not even close. The biggest myth is people think it has to be used here at an Idaho institution. Absolutely not the case. Anything post-secondary. It can be at trade schools, two-year, four-year graduate schools, right? So not this traditional four-year universities can be used for, um, certificate programs, kind of anything post-secondary, right? And then what we can actually use it on, anything, anything, right, basically post-secondary room and board, books, tuition, laptops, electronic items, required supplies, right? So pretty much anything go along that, in that post-secondary realm. Uh, you can also use it for some, uh, certain K through 12 expenses, supplies for K through 12 families, uh, laptops, tuition at the private school level, right? So there's K through 12 expenses along the way. And also you can, uh, use our 529 funds to repay qualified student loans. So maybe there might be some employees at the, at the county that might not have kids, might have grandkids, somebody they're saving for, but they might have student loans, right? So the 529 plan can still apply to some of those, some of those employees along the way. Um, so then from as far as actual benefit side, um, few key pieces to the benefit. First of all, it's free. It's a free voluntary benefit, right? So there's no cost to the county to off, actually offer this, offer this program. Um, as far as administering it, very simple to do. We kind of run everything in our system, right? When they set their program, our plan, they say, I want to do a payroll. We say, how much do you want pulled from your paycheck? We give them a, um, a form and on that form it has everything they need to do to set it up as a post-tax direct deposit, right? So big difference between a post-tax direct deposit and a pre-tax payroll deduction, right? So this would be if a employee wanted to split their net pay up between like their savings account and their checking account, this would just be another direct deposit line item where it automatically goes to their kiddos 5, 529 plans, right? So very, very simple to do on that side.
But it would go to your account, not an employee's account?
Oh, would, would, it would go to the employee, to the employee's 529 account.
Right. But through your company, so they can invest it.
Yes, exactly. Right. And we can get into that. Yeah. Exactly what that looks like. Yeah. Um, and so, yeah. So it'd come through the bank, go into their plan. Well, it comes through us, goes into their plan, right? Um, but yeah, so that's kind of how it works on the voluntary benefit side. Uh, Matthew thought it'd be a good idea for me to just mention some of the counties that use it, right? Um, so we have everything from obviously large, the large county, Ada County. I was at their benefits fair, fair last month. Um, always some small ones, right? Valley County, Washington County, some of those mid-sized counties, Cooney County, um, some of those counties offer. I think we have nine, 10 counties throughout the state right now who offer the plan. And then as Matthew mentioned, one of the big ones, obviously here, the other one I would just highlight is Idaho State, right? Idaho State offers a plan for their, um, their employees right now currently. Obviously a big deal in this, in this area, right? All of our four-year universities actually offer the plan as a, as a payroll, payroll direct deposit. So, um, yeah, so some of the highlights of the plan. Um, happy to take questions if anybody has, if you need those questions along the way.
So the individual can utilize it and family members down to grandchildren and stuff? How, what's the limit?
Yeah. So anybody, anybody can, can open a 529 for anybody else, right? So there's no, no limits on any of that. Um, friends and family can gift money into those kids' accounts. One of the cool things about the program is actually the person contributing the money who gets to deduct the funds off their Idaho taxes, not necessarily the person who owns the account. So I have an account for my kiddos. My mom and dad, grandma and grandpa, they contribute into my kids' accounts. They're Idaho taxpayers. They get it deducted off their state taxes, right? But it can be for, the employee could be, uh, the beneficiary on the account. Maybe they're going back to school, maybe they're paying off student loans. It could be for their kids. It could be for their grandkids, nieces and nephews. Um, they can open their accounts open for, open for anybody.
You don't have to identify who it's going to?
You do have to identify a beneficiary, but then those beneficiaries are transferable. So once you name that beneficiary, you're not, you're not stuck with that beneficiary. You just have to have a name on the beneficiary when you open, when you open the accounts.
Okay.
Yeah. Great question.
Good question. I like that.
So you have to, so say you have three kids.
Yes.
You name one of them.
Yeah. So.
And then just transfer to the next.
Yeah. So the best thing to do is just have an account open for each one of the kids. Um, now you, once you log in, they're all under the same login. So we're not trying to manage three different usernames and passwords, right? You just log in once, you see all of them under the same accounts. Um, and then since they're all members of the same family, you can transfer funds in between those accounts, you know, anything like that. You could technically just have one account and just switch that beneficiary. But if they're going to be like in college at the same time, that gets kind of tricky, right? Um, also I like to have a separate account for both of my kids. So when friends and family are gifting money for birthdays and holidays, it's just going to that kid's, that kid's account. Um, and then, uh, but yeah, so that's kind of how, that's kind of how that, that would work. I recommend having an account open for each kid. You could do one if you want to just manage it that way. And that's, that's absolutely an option.
Yeah. Question. Question. Cool. I like it.
So it's post-tax as far as the county's concerned, but it is pre-tax as far as this, their own state of Idaho.
Yeah. So it gets a little, a little tricky like that, right? So post-tax for the, for the county, right? So it's just their net pay. There's just.
And so there's no responsibility for us.
Exactly.
On that, but the individual can benefit from a pre-tax.
Yep.
Like a tax credit.
Correct. So tax deduction. Yep. So then they, then when, uh, you know, they add that up, right, their payroll, they add it up at the end of the year. So it kind of get reconciled on the tax return at the end of the year by the, by the individual taxpayer.
Okay.
Yeah. Great question.
Okay. Anything else?
Is there any, on the payroll side of it, um, what does it look like setting it up on the payroll side?
Yep. Yep. So great question. So they, they open their account up with, well, with us, right? And then they like, then they can elect to do a payroll. So then we ask them, how much do you want pulled from your paycheck, right? So they say, I want $50 pulled from my paycheck. Then we have them print out a form and on that form it just has a bank account, has a routing number, tells them the market is a checking account, right? So then they would even bring it into payroll, HR, whoever that is, right? They would be, be doing that. And they would set that up just like any other direct deposits. Um, and then like I said, then that net pay would just, some of it would just get siphoned off to their, to their Ideal 529.
I, I've already done that.
Yeah.
Without it being offered specifically through here. I just took our direct deposit form and split it between the two accounts. That I wanted this much to go to that. And then on their end, they knew how much to put into each one of my kids' accounts. And so it was just really nothing. It's like people who have money sent to mom on an account and they keep, throw out their check, whatever, it's on the direct deposit.
So that's a great example, right? They probably have some people, some people in the county that might already be doing it, right? Um, so officially offering it as a benefit and then we can come in and do the education, right? We can, uh, do webinars and lunch and learns and meet with people one-on-one, right? Just give the employees a little bit more recess, uh, resources about the 529. Most people have no idea what a 529 is and that, that we exist, right? And so offering it through the employer as a benefit, um, just kind of gives those people that access to, to what a 529 is.
It did save me from paying state taxes on my.
I don't even need to be up here. I can just lie, Ricky. You can do it. So yes. Um, so I appreciate, appreciate the input on it.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other information that commissioners or clerk or county would like as we look, as maybe we look at this in the future? Any research or references or other things that you would need to feel comfortable looking at adding this as a, something to our benefit lineup?
I think it's an easy ad. Makes sense.
It's no cost to the county. It's just education.
Yeah.
Just an educational component that would allow somebody coming in once a year or whatever to just explain it.
Okay. Well, again, we don't have an action item today. We're going to focus on 401K stuff first. But while Nick was on this side of the state, uh, we thought he'd have him come and present and answer any questions. So.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you being here today. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we're to the claims agenda. Any questions on the claims and consent agenda today?
The only thing I had was that we were paying for a process for the keyed entry or whatever it is down to the events center. Are we?
That was part of the original.
That was part of the original. We're, we're not to that trying to figure out the FOBs or the key code. That was just the keyed entry is up to this point.
That was the original.
That was the only question I had was just, I didn't think we were quite there yet to the, the thing. So with that, I'll go ahead and make the motion to, uh, pay the items on the consent agenda and approve them.
Okay. Motion. We've got one, one deal here. Okay. What is that?
So last week I brought before the board, uh, mileage request for our treasurer. Um, in the meantime, going to her treasurer's conference, the following week she went to IAC. Um, she didn't know yet that she couldn't do her own vehicle. So that is just a follow-up request to do one-way mileage. Um, now she knows that this was again before she knew.
Okay.
I'm trying to get that invoice back. Sometimes she works out the process.
Okay. So we do have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
With that, we are at.